Go ahead, Ms. Walker.
So when y'all are talking about governing, you all just started this meeting doing everything wrong. How could you... Hold on, wait a minute. How did... Why did you think that you could walk in here and do a business as usual after what happened on the 12th? And why, when you're repeatedly told if you're feeling the pulse of the city, if Mike is set... I mean, he's disconnected from the community. If we are asking that someone else speak besides him, then you all need to handle that. The same way you all sat in the room and elected him as mayor. If he cannot speak for you all, you all should not allow it. I want them dragged out of the room. But somebody told officers in this town to stand down, let her... Because people were being victimized all over the city.
Thank you, Carla.
But you can drag citizens out of here. Hold on, wait. Wait, just a minute. You can drag citizens out of here, you're officers. And look at the officers you brought here tonight versus who is usually here. What kind of statement are you all making? Part of the demand is that you all need to do some self-assessment because you need to...
Thank you, Carla. Thank you. Hey, y'all, can we settle so we can let her talk? Your minute is gonna begin, ma'am. Thank you.
My name is Gail Weatherill. I'm a 35-year resident of Charlottesville. And I came here tonight to ask for an independent citizen inquiry into the decisions that were made by the leaders of law enforcement for the officers on August 12th. I'd like to know why Fridays after 5:00 or the Dogwood Festival has tighter security. On August 12th, I went to McIntyre Park to see who these people were. They were angry. They told me, they said, "I'll cut you, bitch. I swear to God, I will." And you know what? There was not a single law enforcement officer in sight. Not a patrol car, nothing. If something had happened to me, how would you explain to my children how that happened?
Yes, ma'am.
And to start this meeting off with resolutions about teen crumpet and let's shake hands. Shows... Shows an insensitivity to what people are feeling.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, guys, so we can let Ms. Parker go. Ms. Parker, your time.
No, my name is Ms. Parker. My name is Rosa Parks.
Ms. Parks.
Swamps. We even came through the Underground Railroad. We came over here being slaves. Act time is up, Mike. Because you are fake. You was in our church, you and the governor praising y'all's police officers like they was doing something. July 8th, they getting more shit than they did on Saturday. I was hit with a tear gas grenade for no reason. Getting pushed across the street with your fat ass police. So therefore, I have a fucking problem. And you got more fucking cops coming to low income houses for one day.
Hold on, hold on, let her talk, let her talk.
One more second. That your ass had nothing to cancel the motherfucking kids to school, back to school because your fucking officers was at another goddamn funeral. Y'all should have had these fucking kids. Y'all canceled it twice to let them fucking monkeys come up in this motherfucker.
Are you all... Let them talk. Just let them talk. Alright, let's... Hold on so we can let her go. Whenever you ready.
Last time I was here, I handed you 21 pages of threats. 21 pages, including the types of terroristic threats that we saw. I told you then that we did the work because you could not. Because you were too incompetent to do that work. Well, we continue to do that work. You wanna call yourselves the capital of the resistance? The resistance was the medics who saved lives. The resistance are the citizens who are identifying the perpetrators of hate crimes. The resistance is the clergy who stood there nonviolently and the community who came to their defense when the Nazis were unmoved by pleas of nonviolence. You wanna call yourselves the capital of the resistance. Charlottesville is not the capital of the resistance. Charlottesville is the capital of the Antifa.
Alright, y'all, so we can let Brother Tracy talk. Go ahead, Brother Jackson.
Hey, y'all.
Go ahead, brother.
I'm outraged. I'm outraged because I sat there and I watched police just stand by while you let citizens get attacked. You let citizens get murdered. That girl, I knew that girl. You let her get murdered. There was... There was no... Nobody blocking off the streets or anything. No cop there in sight.
Hold on, let him go, let him go.
If you guys can't do your job and protect these people... Because this is my extended family right here. If you can't do it, I'm gonna get somebody together and we gonna do it. And if they come back, they will not be walking out. I guarantee it. I guarantee it. Freedom of speech, sir. Five years ago, we had a talk about freedom of speech. You said that I couldn't espouse my views because it was a family gathering. But neo-Nazis had come... Uh, during the Trayvon Martin thing, remember? We had a talk in your office, sir.
But you couldn't say something at a family gathering?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And the only thing I'm saying is, I'm comparing it to that... To that time because I was not allowed to say what I was gonna say. What I was gonna say was, "We need healing." Alright? KKK and neo-Nazis can come here and say whatever they want, but a citizen from here can't. That's ridiculous. You just dragged out three people because they were expressing their freedom of speech. It is...
Thank you, Brother Tracy. Give the brother a round of applause. Next up. Brother, tell me where you wanna start.
How y'all doing? I hope not so good, for real, for real. We want you out. And you are not coming back. For now, whatever city council members that wanna sit in this chair, we own y'all. Don't forget that. We are y'all bosses. You don't go by any views that we have. You got Prospect, Garrett, 1st Street, all of them. Do you walk through them? Do you walk through them? No, you haven't, because I'm there. Let me tell y'all something. Let me tell y'all something. Saturday night when all of that happened, the buses stopped running at 9:00. Did anybody hear that? So you got people that's working out there all through the nights and they gotta catch the bus at 11:45. Nobody, they walking by themselves unprotected. Do y'all care? Do you really care? I think not. Do you care about anybody that got something to say? You ain't even listening, you just looking at me. Looking at me dumbfounded, like... When you are out of here, I hope it represents to every other council member that we are here. We ain't going nowhere now.
Alright. Thank you, brother. I'm sorry. Working it.
Mr. Galvez, Lord forgive me for what I'm about to do. Tonight, I am filled with righteous indignation. I am morally outraged. This shit has got to stop. And it's got to stop now. Somebody's gotta be held accountable. Somebody's gotta be answerable for this weekend. Teresa Sullivan's gotta answer why she let those clowns... Why she ever let those clowns march on UVA and put the students and the buildings and the lawn in jeopardy like she did? And I don't wanna hear that bull about she didn't know. She knew. Chief Thomas has to answer why there was no barricade between the protesters and the Nazis. And Mike, you gotta explain why they were ever able to occupy that park at 8:30 and 9:00 when their permit called for 12 to 5:00. Somebody's gotta answer for this. I might stop short of saying that the blood of those three lives... I don't give a damn about that minute. I don't give a damn. Somebody give me some minutes. Somebody's gotta be held accountable for not only the blood of those three lives, but for every injury that happened this past weekend. And I will be damned if I see another one of my brothers or sisters get beaten or die. Something is going to happen, as Malcolm said, by any means necessary. These people are tired and they fed up of this foolishness. And damn it, if you all decide to let them come back ever again, it is on your heads and on your heads, whatever happens. Be it to us or be it to them. I just hope that there's some room left and there's some dirt left here in Charlottesville because, as the young folks say, it's going down for real.
Thank you, brother.
And I'm calling on teaching every one of you all to stand up tonight. Stand up tonight. Let not only the councilors know, let our whole county know. Let your neighbors know. Let every neighborhood in town know. We're not taking this shit anymore.
Thank you, Brother Don. Brother Don, let him go.
Please forgive me. I do not talk like that. I'm sorry. I promise you, I'm sorry. But I can't cry anymore. I can't be the peacemaker anymore. It's time for a change. And we as... We as black people and we as people of color and all those who stand with us, we gotta stop praying to God for... That he'll send us someone. We gotta realize that we are that someone. And something's back that if we want a change in this city, we have got to be the change. If we can't defend our elected or appointed leaders, we got to take over and be the change.
Thank you, brother.
God bless you. Thank you.
Tell me where you wanna start.
I ain't even got a lot to say. All I'm gonna say is that we want y'all. We want y'all and we hold y'all. We told y'all numerous times that this shit was gonna happen. And y'all did nothing. Y'all had multiple opportunities to intervene and you did not intervene one time. We told y'all exactly what y'all needed to do and y'all did nothing. We told y'all that they were coming here to commit absolute destruction on people of color, black communities, and y'all did nothing. Y'all did nothing at all. And they absolutely succeeded. They absolutely succeeded in terrorizing our communities. Again, you did nothing. We told y'all this. They came here to absolutely wreak havoc. And you did nothing. There were several opportunities, again, every step of the way. Every step of the way. Months and months and months and months of time. Y'all had chances to do something and you did nothing at all. And I'm disappointed in all of y'all and I want all of y'all gone for that very reason. Let me continue. Let me continue. So, it took Heather dying, dozens of people... Dozens of people being sent to the hospital...
Can you have someone's minute?
Dozens of people... Dozens of people having to deal with mental trauma that they may never be able to shake. All of this shit because y'all didn't wanna listen to us. And now y'all wanna listen to us now? Now y'all want the statues gone. This is something that y'all wanna do now. Shit that y'all been sold for several months. Do y'all see yourselves as heroes? Do y'all see yourselves as our saviors for doing things that we told y'all to do for forever? Now it's different because somebody died. How many times did we tell you this shit was gonna happen? And you did nothing. Yeah, we want all of y'all gone for this shit.
Yeah, somebody acknowledge that.
Please acknowledge that.
No, no acknowledgement.
Y'all gonna do nothing like y'all been doing thus far?
I think we'll talk after.
Alright, we can talk right now? Do our... Do our concerns not matter to you? Do our lives not matter to you?
Preston, can I say one thing?
Do our lives not matter to you? You can say something after you answer that question.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes. Your lives matter to us.
Okay, go ahead. Say what you gotta say.
We tried really hard to get the rally out and a federal judge... A federal judge forced us to have the rally downtown. I'm just gonna say, we did try. Preston, we tried really hard to get that rally out of downtown, Charles Town. Because we're legally required to. I just... You asked for a response.
Alright, next up.
What?
Oh, you wanna finish? Hold on, let him finish. Let him finish. Let him finish.
Okay, so... So this is what I wanna know. What do y'all gonna do when they come back? Because they are coming back, because they've already said so. What do y'all plan to do when they come back? Because those statues are still there. That's their beacon. They coming back. What do y'all gonna do? I wanna know that. Somebody answer my question, please.
We're... That's in our business tonight. If we had been... If we'd gotten our statements, we were talking about like that. But... But we are... We got it.
This is what we want. This is what we want. This is what we want. We want... This is what we want. We want Mike Signer, Kathy Galvin, Al Thomas gone. Because... Because... Because we need... We need leaders in this community who actually will protect us, who actually care about our lives. Because next time, it's gonna be a lot more than one depth.
Thank you. Let's give the brother... It's time to talk. Go ahead, brother.
My name is Johnny Knuckles. It's not enough to change your mind and want the statues gone now. White liberal intellectualism is complicity and it's bullshit. Take the statues down tonight. If there is no injunction on the Stonewall Jackson statue nor the Confederate Soldier statue, take them down. Challenge the Commonwealth of Virginia and the federal government. Take them down. If we... I have a question. If we take them down, will you charge us? The statute describing the punishment for defacing a memorial state of Virginia code says, "If we don't plan to steal them, it is a class 3 misdemeanor." Will you charge us with a class 3 misdemeanor to go outside right now and take down the Confederate Soldier statue? Take them down.
Good sir. Good sir, can you keep going, please? Can you keep going? Let him finish his speech, y'all.
Stop being cowards and take the motherfucking statues down.
Alright, y'all, let's get this... Okay. Alright, let's get this moment... You wanna get a line, sir? Well, unfortunately, we're not doing things how we normally doing tonight. This is an unusual meeting. No, I have ordered...
Jim Baker, city resident, 35 years.
Alright, we're not gonna be able to continue. Thank you, sir.
The chief should be here to stand in this fire and not leave his sworn officers here to do that duty. Brian Moran, who compared this to a hockey fight at one point, should be here to stand in this fire and not leave his sworn officers to stand in this and do his duty. And one thing that the city council could do to honor these people positively is to pass some sort of resolution to honor the people in this community who stood up that day and to honor the people who came from outside of this community, who protected our parks, who protected our citizens, who took blows, who stood up, who stood in the fire, who did the work that our officers could not do or would not do. And I don't blame our sworn officers. I don't blame the people who were ordered not to do things because the leadership and the planning and the people who told them not to do that. You knew that there were 1,000 officers that were in... That were here in town. There were command posts who were planning for all of the things that were expected. They knew what was coming. They knew the violence that was here. You could go to public Facebook post and prepare for this rally.
Thank you, sir.
You knew what was going on. The leadership has a lot to answer for. You all know what to look into. Do it. Be accountable. That's your job.
Thank you.
Stand up and do it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Can we allow the next lady to speak?
Officers, I need... Are we safe outside? Is there...
Alright, alright, y'all. Alright, so let's let her go.
I meant all of us.
Let her go, let her go. Hey, everybody, if we could calm down so we can let her speak, please? Give her her minute.
On Thursday, July 6th, at 4:49 PM, I called the Charlottesville PD and I emailed the Charlottesville City Council. I emailed under the "See Something, Say Something", asked per the Department of Homeland Security Anti-Terrorism Program and asked... Should I continue? Okay. So...
Go ahead, sweetheart.
Thank you. To see that I saw that the Klan and then later Nazis were coming to our town and to report them as terrorists. The response that I received was that the current interpretation of the Constitution allowed their freedom of speech despite their imminent threat to life and limb. Now... And this continued for the next month and a half. I asked if you would issue a permit to ISIS. The response that I received in writing was yes. Now, it does not... It does not slip past me that today is the day we're commemorating that women got the vote. Now, I'm a math teacher, but it doesn't take a math teacher to count to seven and see the four people that the Constitution didn't recognize when it was written. If any other terrorist organization, domestic or international, applies for a rally in the city of Charlottesville, I ask you to do what... The evolution of this country, which is that when the law is wrong, we stand up to change it. Please stand up against the wrong interpretation of the Constitution that for some reason is protecting Nazis and not your citizens. Stand by your citizens first, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me know where you wanna start.
I'm ready. Like many people here, I stood some 30 feet from where Heather was killed in a terrorist attack. I watched here for weeks while people came in and gave detailed evidence of specific threats that these organizations had developed. In their chats, they discussed specifically running over protesters with cars. Why is it that city council cannot recognize white terrorism for what it is? The form of terrorism that's killed more people in this country than any other form ever has or ever will? Why did you not take it serious? 4th Street was supposed to be closed that day. Why was traffic diverted there? Why was traffic diverted there? Why did the police... Why did the police...
Can you have someone's minute? Have someone's minute?
Why did the police stand back and in the words of Cornel West, "Have to rely on anti-fascist counter protesters to avoid being severely beaten and possibly killed"? Why weren't police present when DeAndre Harris was beat in a parking garage right across the road? From the police station? And what I would say is, the reason people are here tonight doing this is not just because of this event. It's because for months, people have come here and you sit here and you don't listen. You listen to your donors. You listen to the community you're around, but you're not listening to the entire Charlottesville community. And I would just say, Mayor Signer, your political career is over. Quit the political games. We're not idiots. We know that you dragged this city along for months to avoid responsibility on making a decision on the statue issue. We're not idiots. Quit the political games. Your political career is over. You can stand on the side of justice now. Take down the statues immediately. Don't give life to the premises, okay? If there's injunction, you can settle it afterwards. And it's deeper than that. The statues are simple, but the council needs to take action on implementing a new plan for public housing and redevelopment in this city. It needs a full independent investigation of all the decision-making that went into the police actions on August 12th and July 8th. It needs a full investigation and public accountability from the Charlottesville Police Department on why they failed to investigate properly the disappearance of Sage Smith. It needs a new effort to give the citizens of Charlottesville oversight and control of policing strategies, including when the Charlottesville Police Department buys weapons-grade equipment and its use of policies like stop and frisk. That's just the beginning. And if you're not gonna do it, this body's not legitimate. The citizens are gonna organize and do it.
Thank you, brother. Thank you. Hold on, y'all. Hold on, y'all, let her go. Switch your...
I'm Roselle Parker now. So...
Ms. Parks.
What are y'all's notion or ideas why y'all's police officers couldn't be there when we were held up in the church? Why torches were surrounding our church? Surrounding them UVA students? Burning some man's neck with a torch and now he had a... So what do you do at nighttime, talking to you two? What do y'all do at nighttime that y'all sleep so well? Why us citizens with mental health issues for the rest of my life? Like he said, I wasn't that long. I could've been killed, because we was right there. And not only did we see the shit, we seeing people's bodies flipping upside down, cars running back over them. But do you have a proper mental health that's gonna take care of all of these people in Charlottesville? Because I had read the ten, I only had a goddamn council for one year. So y'all talk about mental health. What the fuck is mental health if you can't help the goddamn people with y'all's train for this? And what are y'all gonna do with the people that's following us? Trying to intimidate? We get people following. We got people coming after us. We know it's two white cars, two blacks with a yellow caravan, a burgundy car, a burgundy truck. And we getting fucked up if something happen to us. Y'all hear what the fuck I said?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Thank you, councilors. Councilors, community, thank you. It is painful for me to be here tonight. I know it's painful for everybody to be here tonight. It's painful for the councilors to be here tonight. What we saw last weekend was ugly. It was ugliness coming to our town and showing its ugly face. It was violence coming to our town, showing its violent face. And it impacted a lot of you people in this room, a lot of people who were not in this room. And we need to get... We need to fix that. We need to... We need to cut... In order to do that, all of us in this room, while I heard some true things that pained me about... To listen to... To hear about the city. I mean, I gave a lot of my life trying to make this place a better place. And I know, believe it or not, these guys have put time into it too. In order for us to get beyond this, in order to get justice, in order to get justice, all of us have to work together. We are all on the same side.
You can't talk for us. You don't go through what we go through.
Alright. Let's give the sister... Hey, y'all. Hey, y'all, let's give the sister her time, please.
In the interest of community care, Steelers fan, if I have your keys, come find me after I speak.
You wanna hand them to me?
Um...
You gonna hand them to me, should we say it now? Or you got it?
No.
Or hand them to Don?
I am here to present a set of demands from Solidarity Seaville, a network of community defense racial justice activists across the city. These demands are updated from demands that were presented to Charlottesville on July 8th. You've had these demands, these are issues that racial justice activists and community members across the city have been working on, in some cases for years. These are demands for you and because you should resign immediately. These demands, these demands represent the agenda for the real leadership that this city needs urgently and deserves years ago. These are the demands.
Can someone give her a minute?
Number one.
There we go? Go ahead, sister.
Number one, drop all charges against community hero Veronica Vicki. Number two, drop all charges against the 22 people arrested protesting the KKK on July 8th. And I'll ask you guys, there are no charges for anyone tonight. Number three, initiate immediate development of affordable housing for extremely low-income people and fulfill the positive vision of resident-directed redevelopment from the Charlottesville Public Housing Association of Presidents. Number four, apologize publicly for police negligence to the families of Sage Smith? Say her name! Fay Tinsley? Say her name! Fay Tinsley, say her name! And Quinn Woodfolk? Say her name! Quinn Woodfolk? And commit to an expansion of the investigations of Fay's murder and Sage's disappearance. Number five, cease the targeting of black families by social services.
Stop arresting people that call for help also.
Number six, and militarize police units like the Jefferson area Drug Enforcement and its successor. Number seven, stop discriminatory stop and frisk. Number eight, end money bail and release people being held without bond before their trial. Number nine, remove all Confederate monuments. Number 10, resign because there's blood on your hands.